Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole of June 1st to order. Our apologies for the late start, but we had a meeting that ran a little late prior and just some technical issues with water glasses. So, on that note, I'd like to call the word to order and approval of the agenda, please. Thank you. All those in favor of the agenda, opposed, motions carried. And we'll start off this evening. We have a few presentations. The first one's from Tourism Vancouver Island, Mr. Dave Petrick. Welcome.
Thank you, your worship. Just got to make sure the technology works well, members of council. I'm Dave Petrick. I'm the President and CEO of Tourism Vancouver Island, and I want to thank you for taking the time, allowing me the time on your agenda, to do this presentation. I'm going to start with a short video, and the presentation I'm doing is part of a project that we're calling "Powering Economic Alignment and Growth Through Tourism." And the main thrust behind this project is really to enlighten and educate and build the awareness of the value and the importance of tourism and the ability to collaborate and work together, especially as we move forward with economic development, because tourism is one of the great drivers of economic development. Frankly, there's been a gap over the years in the way that we have collaborated and worked together. So, that's part of the process that we've built through this presentation. And we're actually doing this presentation throughout the Vancouver Island region. We've built it to suit four different audiences, one of them being government, which this one tonight is, but we've also got a presentation built for residents, for the economic development community, as well as the stakeholders themselves, the tourism stakeholders themselves. So, I'm going to play this short video, and then I'll follow up with that with some background information on tourism.
.....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
So, while we load up the presentation, I just wanted to reinforce the fact that the valueoftourism.ca website is a really great resource that has all the videos that we've done, as well as a lot of background information on tourism, really along the lines of the statistical and researched economic information that you can find, as well as information on the impacts of tourism on lifestyle. Because one of the things that we did when we built the presentations was we realized that a lot of people have been out promoting the importance of tourism and the importance of economic development, economic growth and tourism working together. But in most of the processes that we saw, it was very heavily weighted towards the economic side and the numbers and the jobs and that type of thing, with very little discussion around how important tourism was to our lifestyles, to the fact that tourism is responsible for generating a lot of the things that each of us do every day living here and enjoy, and that we might not see as much of if there wasn't a tourism industry supporting it. So, we felt it was really important to add that to the equation when we talked about the importance and value of tourism. So, tourism, we're in it together, and really, there's a couple of buzzwords that we're hearing a lot lately, being collaboration and alignment, and also talking a lot about leveraging. When we look at the landscape in British Columbia presently, I'm sure most of you are familiar with Destination British Columbia, which is a Crown Corporation, has a budget of just over $50 million, I believe it's about $52 million, to market British Columbia. And in the world landscape, that's really not an awful lot of money, because the competition is becoming so extreme throughout the world. I'm sure some of you are seeing advertisements for destinations that you never would have thought of going to as a tourist 20 years ago, but now are realizing the importance and the value of tourism as an economic generator, and are starting to promote themselves as tourism destinations. We see the same thing just within British Columbia, where a number of communities had never really thought about getting involved in tourism, but they are, and so the competitive marketplace is getting much greater than it ever was in the past. So, making sure that we're investing to keep our brand top of mind with the consumers is incredibly important, and it is costly. So, when we look at Destination British Columbia with a budget of about $52 million, we realize that in the worldwide marketplace, that's pretty small. But then we take it a couple of steps further, and we realize that the municipal regional district tax, the 2% additional tax for hotel rooms that many communities in British Columbia have levied, is adding about another $20 million in marketing investment for tourism. In addition to the resort municipality funding, which is another 20 million, so there's about $90 million in tax dollars that are being invested in British Columbia for destination marketing and development. The other piece of that, however, is the amount of money that's being invested from communities like yours, the amount of money that's being invested by the tourism businesses themselves, and we have no idea what that gross number is, but we think it's pretty darn big. The challenge is that it's not being utilized in a focused manner, it's not aligned. Every different tourism business is spending money on marketing independently, and every community is spending money independently on marketing. But getting it aligned to where we can really leverage those dollars and make them really get a strong impact in the marketplace is critical for us to be able to be competitive. So, we're talking a lot at many different levels, at the provincial level, at the national level, about how do we get better alignment with more focus and more collaboration of tourism businesses working together, so that we can utilize all the resources that are actually out there right now, and really make the best benefit of them. When we take a look at the structure of the tourism industry in Canada, it's, I think, really important to look at it from the layering effect that we have from the national level down to the community level and the individual business level. So, nationally, we have an organization that, up until I believe last Friday, was called the Canadian Tourism Commission, and it's now Destination Canada. They've just rebranded it, which I think is terrific. I think that resonates a lot better with the industry than it being a commission to it being more of a destination organization. So, Destination Canada, as we see their role, and as they see their role, is to market the Canadian brand as a tourism destination in the international emerging marketplaces where the Canadian brand isn't highly recognized, as well as to support the Canadian brand in the long haul markets where the brand is fairly strong already. The next layer down is the provincial organizations such as Destination British Columbia, whose role is to come into those markets that already have a strong awareness and desire to travel to Canada, and start telling them about the British Columbia products, so that we can move them towards British Columbia. And as we come down that layer, and we look at an organization like Tourism Vancouver Island, where we're a regional destination marketing organization, we're very focused on going into markets where the British Columbia brand is already strong, and there's already a desire to travel to British Columbia, and talk to those markets about our part of British Columbia, and why they should travel to our part of British Columbia. So, our focus is very much in the British Columbia, Alberta, Washington marketplace, and supporting Destination British Columbia in the long haul marketplaces of the UK, Germany, and Australia, a little bit of the Asian market, but really, our role is in those close-in markets. And as we come down to the next layer, we look at community tourism marketing organizations such as Serta here, and what their role is, is really to promote the Sook region into markets that are already familiar with British Columbia and Vancouver Island. We get a lot more opportunity to influence if we're in the markets where there's already a strong awareness for the other destination. The other pieces there, however, are the stakeholders themselves, and getting them aligned to make sure that they're working with us to market into the right marketplaces with the same messages, so that the consumer is getting consistent messaging. And that's a really important role that we are working with Destination British Columbia to try and build a better relationship at that level. And then the other piece that we haven't really talked about previously is working with the economic development community, and we believe that we're both using a lot of the same language and a lot of the same marketing techniques to do a little bit different things. Economic development is looking at resident attraction, workforce attraction, investment attraction, but in a lot of ways, they're using the same messages. They're talking about the beauty of the area, they're talking about the services in the area, they're talking about the lifestyles in the area, they're talking about the workforce that can be developed because of the lifestyle. And we haven't been collaborating with that community to a great degree, and that's something we know we need to do, and we're starting to talk more and more with the economic development community about how we can do that. We're all selling the brand. When we talk economic development or we talk tourism, we're all selling the brand of the destination of Vancouver Island, of the Sook region, and we're looking towards how we can collaborate on making that brand one that is strong and reflective of everything that we use. And how you sell that brand using the right mix of media to get to the right people at the right time is really important. And again, leveraging that marketing investment, so that we're consistently working towards all selling the same destination brands is incredibly important. That's an area that Destination BC, some of you may have seen, that they've just done a refresh of the British Columbia brand, the supernatural British Columbia brand, and really gone in a great direction, I believe, and a very unique direction than they have before. Now, it's our job as a tourism industry to support that brand and to work with that brand together. That's where the alignment and collaboration really comes into play. So, a little bit about Tourism Vancouver Island. For those of you that aren't familiar with us, that's one of the reasons I'm out here, is to try and make sure that people are familiar with what our organization does. We've been doing destination marketing for the Vancouver Island region since 1962, and I wasn't a founding member, I just want to make sure everybody's aware, although I was just telling Jonathan that I was actually on the Board of Directors of Tourism Vancouver Island about 30 years ago when I was operating hotels, so I've kind of done a full circle and come back as the paid guy with them now, which is kind of nice compared to just being on the board. But our organization's been around for a long time. We were originally a membership-based organization, and from a community standpoint, all communities on Vancouver Island were considered founding members and paid an annual fee, as well as the private sector businesses were paying fees annually to Tourism Vancouver Island. But about 12 years ago, we decided that the membership was really creating two things. It was creating a barrier for the industry to collaborate with us, because they had to pay a fee to be part of the game, so to speak. But we also felt that we weren't doing the job we needed to do in the marketplace by only talking about a select number of members that paid a fee, versus talking about all the product that we had in Vancouver Island. One of the things that I found really interesting was we did an inventory of tourism businesses and found that there was almost 4,000 tourism businesses on Vancouver Island 11 years ago, and we only had about 800 members. And we thought, this doesn't make sense, that we're only representing 800 businesses to the marketplace. So, we eliminated the membership structure, and we moved to what we now call a stakeholder model, and I'm really proud to say that we were the founder of that model, but all the regional tourism organizations in B.C. have adopted the model, and most of the community tourism organizations have either moved towards a model or are moving towards a model. So, we're pretty excited about that. Our role for the last 52 years has been in developing cooperative marketing programs. We look at the way we work with the industry, is that industry owns us, and our job is to help them by building programs for them to participate in. And for many years, we've received program funding through Tourism British Columbia, the government of British Columbia, Destination British Columbia, depending on which way the tide moved over the years. We've delivered a program called the Tourism Partner Program, where we've had funds that we've been able to apply to programs, so that we could actually reduce the costs for tourism businesses to market with us, so that we could market the brand of Vancouver Island and also the individual businesses through cooperative programs. So, we've been doing cooperative stuff for a lot of years, and we think we're pretty darn good at it, but we need to continue to expand on that and have everybody thinking about how they work cooperatively. Presently, our budget enables us to get about $1.4 million into the marketplace to sell Vancouver Island and the product that we have here. It's not a lot of money, but in the close-in markets of B.C., Washington, and Alberta, we are able to have a fairly significant impact through that budget. And we're able to do that, not just because of the funds that we get through the Crown Corporation, Destination British Columbia, but in fact, we leverage that two-to-one through private sector buy-in. So, it's really private sector that's putting in the majority of the funds that enable us to do that. We also do a number of things besides the cooperative marketing programs to help communities and help the tourism businesses. Community Tourism Foundations and Community Tourism Opportunities are two programs that we deliver on behalf of Destination British Columbia. The Community Tourism Foundations program is a program where we go into a community and we help build a tourism strategy for that community, and then we come back and assist them in making sure that strategy's being developed. Through the Community Tourism Opportunities program, which is a cost-sharing program, it's a matching one-to-one dollars through Destination B.C. that we're able to apply to communities, and I know that the Sook region has taken opportunity to work through Community Tourism Opportunities to be able to market the Sook region on its own. So, to me, that's a very good program. There's going to be some changes over the next year, as we have our new Crown Corporation in place in British Columbia, to some of these co-op programs, but in a lot of ways, I think they're going to be a real improvement and a real value to the communities that can access them. We also do a number of capacity-building things. We hold Pro D days in two different locations on Vancouver Island every year to try and bring some educational sessions for the tourism industry, so that the industry can grow its capacity, as well as our annual conference in AGM, which we held here last year or the year before?
2012.
2012. My memory's gone. That's what happens when you work for an organization, as long as I have. 2012, we held our AGM here, and we put on a pretty good conference with a lot of educational sessions, again, to help the industry to build capacity. But what we really find is important with our conferences, a networking that industry gets. It's having those different operators, meeting each other, learning from each other, gaining other knowledge, and being able to actually collaborate more through that networking. So, it's another way that we try to help the industry. We also do some webinars and workshops to help support industry to further develop their capacity. So, we try to work in a number of different ways with industry over the year. So, what am I here to talk to you about? I was at a council meeting a couple of weeks ago, and they said, as I was leaving, there was no ask. And there is no ask. I'm not here tonight looking for money, but there is an ask. The ask is really to be supportive of the tourism industry as council, to support investment in your community that will support tourism, to develop policy that encourages and supports tourism within your community, to invest in infrastructure that supports the industry, and promote tourism career development, and support your local tourism organization so that it can help support the businesses here within the community. So, that's really our ask, is to see your support as the government body in helping us to work towards that alignment and collaboration, so that we can truly move the opportunities forward that we have in developing a strong tourism industry. So, I'd really, again, like to thank you for giving me the time to be able to speak with you this evening, and I'll mention again, valueoftourism.ca for a lot more information than I can provide in a short period of time, and I really encourage you to take a look at it. We had a number of people support us in this project, a number of tourism organizations, but also the Island Economic Trust, who was a partner in giving us the ability to build these presentations. So, again, thank you, your worship, members of council, and if there's any question and time for questions, I'd be happy to try and respond to them.
Thank you very much for your presentation and for coming out today. I think it was great just to get an overview on the role of Tourism Vancouver Island, so thank you for taking the time. Questions or comments from councillors? Councillor Pearson?
Thank you for your presentation tonight, and I think we all understand the value of tourism and what it means to our local economy and our way of living, because I think you touched on a couple of key points there for me, is that tourism promotes activities and things, but it also enhances our local living. The one role that always comes up in my mind is about, what about the discussion with B.C. ferries? Every time I read anything about ridership being done, and I'm actually just on the website, I went to Tourism, just looked at your website just while you were talking, but I was just looking at the stats for B.C. ferries, and of course, it's driving the economy down, and there's a big piece of this. So, where's your link to having discussions with the government? I guess it's probably one of the questions I would ask.
You're the first person to ever ask me that.
Yeah, I'm sure. Because I think, obviously, it's probably the question you get asked the most.
Yeah, it's a real challenge, and of course, especially being an island, we need access, and we only have two forms of access, and that's water and air, because obviously, we don't have a bridge. So, it's a critical issue. How do we deal with it? First of all, I've got to say that our organization's mandate does not include advocacy, and our board is very specific that we stay out of the advocacy arena, because it gets very convoluted to be able to try and market the same businesses. And frankly, we have to be able to market B.C. ferries, as well as other tourism businesses as well, in order to try and get visitors to come here. That's not to say that in the background that we're not talking with, we hope, the right people. There's a Tourism Industry Association of B.C., which is an advocacy agency, and that's their role, is to advocate on behalf of the industry. So, we're constantly talking with them about trying to do the right things around those issues. Destination B.C. plays in that arena as well, but I think even more importantly, I've had several discussions with AVICC, and AVICC, I know, has taken recommendations back to the provincial body, and I think that's where the best opportunity to invoke change with the Crown Corporation is, is through the municipality's voice combined to be able to do that. But I should make one point, which I try to make with a lot of the people in the tourism industry and other groups that I talk to, and that is that, I guess it's a combination of points, but on the worldwide stage, B.C. ferries is actually viewed as a very good service, it's viewed as an affordable service, and it's viewed as a safe service on the worldwide stage. It's really here at home where we don't view it that way, and we have good reason not to view it that way, because it's our livelihood, and we have to commute using that service. And so, one of the things I've often expressed to B.C. ferries is, why aren't you looking at a tiered system where the residents are getting commuter-type fares, and it's hard for me to say this, and the tourists are paying a larger share? Because frankly, as soon as I get out of B.C. and Alberta and Washington, the visitors aren't concerned about the ferry costs. They don't think they're that high. It's really the media attention that we create as redidents that is really driving the traffic down on B.C. ferries, in my opinion. And this is always a really touchy subject when we get into this, but I think we have to be careful on that front. I think we do need to certainly advocate for the appropriate changes. At the same time, I also encourage that we're careful with the way we talk about our provincial service, especially around the media.
Thank you, Councillor Parkinson.
A number of years ago, there was talk about increasing the length of the airport to take on charter flights and other distance flights. I was wondering if that is still in discussions?
Which airport?
For Victoria Airport.
Oh, yeah, it's definitely under discussion. I'm not engaged in that at all, but I know that they're still working towards that, and there's, I believe, a lot of opportunity from the international standpoint.
Right.
If we could get a runway expanded there. My understanding is, we can get a jumbo in, we just can't get a full one out.
Right.
And so, that runway expansion would be very important. So, I am aware that they're ongoing, but I'm not sure what stage they're in.
Thank you. Other questions from the committee? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Oh, public input. Thank you, Councillor Parkinson. Do any members of the public have any questions or comments on the presentation?
Ellen Lurie, 5526, a quote. I remember Dave being in, he's been around for a while. I was in the tourism industry as well, still. I totally agree with Kevin, what he said about the ferries. The ferry fares are a big issue. Whether you shouldn't talk about it or not, it's a fact. I see that all the time. There are some people from Alberta that have been coming here for 20 years, coming from Alberta, to come fishing. They came, the father and son came with their boats and their trailers, and they said, this is the last time ever. They said it was way, way too expensive, and they'll never be coming back. And after 20 years, I thought that was really pretty sad. pretty sad. And it's the same with Washington. People aren't coming in from Washington either. The ferry costs are just too expensive. And Vancouver, there, yes, there are certain group of people that, you know, that have the healthy jobs or whatever that can afford that. But for the everyday tourists who, from, that we're looking for now, from, well, maybe not so much now because of American dollar, the way it is now, Americans are coming over. But when, when, when the dollar is the same as, the American dollar and Canadian dollar are the same, we do not see our, our tourists, and those are the tourists that we need is Alberta, Saskatchewan, to come because it's too expensive to come on the ferry. And, and we, and with tourism, we can talk a lot about tourism and how we're going to draw people. But how many people here go to Mexico or to Cuba? Because it costs $700 to go fly there and stay, you know? So it's, it's a real, it's a real difficult thing. You talk to local, the local people, they go, they go to those destinations and more and more people are going to those destinations. You said also that there's, we raise money for essential services through tourism. How do we do that? That's one question. And how do we have new dollars?
Well, the more we grow tourism, the more new dollars are coming into the community because they're spending within the businesses in the community and, and not just the hotel businesses, but the retail businesses, the merchants, the food stores, et cetera. So that's, that's the new dollars. When we, when we talk about tourism help assisting to fund other services like healthcare, et cetera, it's the tax revenues that tourism generates that help pay that bill. Because when we look at things like healthcare, those are expense lines on the provincial budget. The revenues come from industries like tourism paying taxes. And I don't disagree with you on the BC ferries fares. I, I hope you didn't get me wrong. I, I'm not happy with them either. I'm just saying there's two sides to the story. And we're still supportive of advocating for lower fares and, and better service.
Oh, I know. One of, one of the things that I know, one of the biggest benefit factors of tourism, I know is transportation.
Ms. Lurz, could you direct your questions to the committee?
Yeah, one of the biggest benefactors of tourism is transportation. And the transportation being airplanes, trains, trains, planes and automobiles, basically, and, and, and ships. So how does that benefit us when, when those, those are the biggest, those are the biggest benefactors? When people come, because when people come to particular Sook, most people come here because of the natural beauty and they enjoy the natural beauty. They go camping, they go hiking, et cetera. So where does that benefit us financially? Just a question. And also the transportation of our roads.
Your worship. The, the benefit is, actually, you're, you're correct. The largest benefactor from tourism as a whole would be transportation. However, the second largest benefactor is the food and beverage industry. So the restaurants, food service operators, et cetera. And the third biggest benefactor is the accommodation sector. So the bed and breakfasts, the hotel rooms, the motels, et cetera, is where a large part of the, the economic benefit comes from. And in all those cases, it's generating tax revenues to, either to the community or to the province.
Thank you, Councillor Parkinson.
For the benefit, for the last seven years, every summer, I do weddings. And I, we do approximately 100 weddings each. Last week I, in the last two weeks, I did six weddings. The people come from, the last wedding is from Portland, from Calgary, from Nova Scotia. None of them from around here. They all come in here. And for the majority of those people, they all took the ferry over. They stayed at the hotels, they stayed at the harbour house. They, they went out, they did a fishing charter, they do, they go out for dinner, they do different, they went golfing because they tell me everything that they're doing. So a lot of money just from the wedding industry is spent in our town. And they're from people traveling from outside. So I think that is a real benefit.
Thank you. Any other members of the public have any comments or questions? Thank you very much. Okay, so move on to our next piece. We have a presentation at Sea Park Strategic Plan, Mr. David Huco.
Oh, good. You did the hard part for me. Thank you. Your worship councillor, thank you very much for having me here this evening. So I just want to give you a bit of a quick overview of, of what the Sea Park Strategic Plan is about. And some of you are more familiar with it than others. The, the strategic plan is looking at, at five, 10 and 20-year horizons for actions for the future for Sea Park. And it's guiding decisions, priorities for the commission and the staff. And I've been working on it now, I think for probably a couple of months. And it's mostly working on the analysis, historical analysis part of it. But most recently, in the last couple of weeks, I've been talking to various stakeholder groups in the community. And last week, we had an open house. And at this point, we're looking at the report being completed of late June and available sometime in July. So what I'm showing you this evening is, is the slides of the boards that were at the open house last week, plus one, just for the sake of, of discussion. And the first board, really, the, the point we're trying to make, or that I'm trying to make, is that, that the community is a growing community. And with growth comes increased demand for, for various things. And the nature of the growth is very interesting. Using a variety of sources, it suggests that within 20, 25 years, the older adult population is, is going to virtually double. And what it doesn't show is beyond that 25-year window, that starts to contract. And that has some implications downstream. And I'll talk about that a little bit as well. But a significant part of that growth is you're probably well aware with everything you're dealing here all the time is, is the, the growth in young families as well. And that is projected in the 25-year window anyways to increase by as much as 50 percent. One of the attractors or tipping points in, in people choosing a community to live in is the quality and, and nature of the outdoor amenities, but also the infrastructure that's there, the schools, the libraries and the recreation centers. And recreation centers have primarily two different focuses, a, a sport focus and a community focus. And the sport focus, well, that's, that's, I guess, fairly self-evident than right now the existing facility with the pool and the arena. Typically, something like the arena has a very small percentage of the overall population using that specific facility. The pool, on the other hand, has a very broad appeal. Some people may only use it once or twice a year. But nonetheless, it's a, it's always one of those kind of motherhood, motherhood things that a recreation center must have a pool in it. And so, you know, having worked now on this for a period of time, I'm, I'm very happy to say one of the issues that you're not having to deal with is, is starting from scratch with the issue of a pool because they are very expensive buildings. However, recreation centers have three components to them. They're typically the, the wet, the cold and the dry. So you've got the wet and the cold, but perhaps lacking and worthy of, of investigating, expanding is, is the dry component. And if I'm using this correctly. So looking at the, the nature of the demand, and I'll, I'll, I'll get to the, the dry component a little bit. I just want to step, I guess, sideways for a moment and just say that the Sea Park site is 11 acres. And about a quarter of it is, more than a quarter of it, is built space and, and the parking area. But also, more than a quarter of it is unusable just because of the nature of the topography of it. And so one of the things in conversations with the, the commission so far has been the long-term strategy of acquiring additional land for the prospect of growth in whatever nature it occurs. So these pressures don't necessarily exist at this point in time. But it would be prudent to consider acquisition of additional lands for future use. The, the existing site, the, the nature of the challenge that it presents is eventually, for example, the arena will need to be replaced. And there's only sufficient footprint area that's basically the existing parking area. And so in order to build a new arena, the old one will have to be torn down. And it'll have to be done in a, in a kind of a sequence. So there's challenges there. There, the nature of the growth in the future will be additional sports fields and outdoor amenities. And really, none of that can be supported on this site. So at this moment, then, is this opportunity to consider change? And there's, there's a couple of different variables that affect that. As I hinted a little bit about an eventual replacement of the arena. In my estimation, the existing pool and the arena both have approximately a 15-year service life each. And the arena is quite a bit older than the pool. But the nature of the, the construction and the type of building that it is, they aren't necessarily going to last the same length of time. So even though the, the arena is about, I guess, almost 20, 25 years older, it is, it is not unreasonable to expect it to last another, as I say, 15, possibly as much as 20 years. But they, these will be big capital expenditures when the time come. The other factor right now is the debt on the, on the pool is retiring in this year. And so the, so something to consider is the opportunity then to reinvest in the facility, or that, that debt goes away and, and, and is revisited at some, some point in the future potentially. The third factor then is this pent-up demand for the dry land space. And that's primarily around things like the gym and the multipurpose spaces. And so I'm not following my slides exactly. I'm trying to, I'll, I guess I'm giving you the chance to see what, what the public has seen, but also kind of then give you the overview on, on the whole thing. The idea of adding space to Sea Park has been around for at least seven to 10 years with the notion of adding second floor space over the change rooms and, and team rooms area. And that's one of the things being investigated then. A, a, a fitness gym about 2,000 square feet and a multipurpose space also approximately 2,000 square feet. The, the deeper I get into listening to the various stakeholder groups and the feedback we've received at the open house, the, the multipurpose aspect of it probably could be two or threefold. There's, there's a fair bit of demand in the community for various types of access to space for programs, for, for activity and exercise, but also for adult interest, for seniors, youth and so on. So this is really kind of just scratching the surface. But this is kind of the level of comfort that at this point in time, the commission members are, are comfortable with. With this is a couple of modest, by putting a second floor on, we have to introduce two stairwells and an elevator as well. And there's, so there's cost and there's also displacement of those functions in the building. So there's some moving, movement that has to occur. Some of the other things that were identified, also very modest in scale, is the need for more storage space. Because with any facility, the thing that disappears first is, is the storage, when they become offices and, and everything else that a building needs over time, excuse me. The other thing is, is this, I guess, kind of a slightly unusual situation of fierce competition for the family change rooms in the facility. And what that's all about is, is the family change rooms are really universal change rooms are both popular with, with older adults as well as young families. And, and so I suppose as much as anything, it's a confluence of, of those two age groups in the facility and, and using things at the same time. One of the solutions, and it's, I, it's a bit difficult to see in the diagram, but is changing from, in the men's and women's locker rooms from group or gang showers, as they were called, to individual change and shower cubicles. And hopefully this alleviates some of the pressure in the family change room without having to go to a significant expansion in that area. Just very briefly, going up seems like a simple solution, particularly since some money at the time of the construction of the, the Link Building, I believe it was referred to, was beefing up the structure to support a second floor level. There, that isn't necessarily the case. Plus, my intuition was, was some alarm bells were going off, that there's other potential challenges in that part of that expansion would go over the arena. And when you start to do things like that, you trigger a whole series of building code requirements, including seismic and whatnot. And all, and very quickly, a simple, modest addition becomes very complicated. So one of the other strategies that this, this expansion may take is actually building on the Phillips Road side of the building at grade. So beyond the outside of the pool right now, if you can envision that. And so basically, the same kinds of spaces, perhaps a little bit different in scale. It's what, what can actually fit back there. But at this point in time, it, it may be a more economical solution than the building on the second floor. That needs to be more thoroughly investigated. But that's kind of where, where that, that is sitting right at this moment. So there's, there's a number of other things that really need to be investigated as well, or have been identified, rather, is a whole series of projects, things like playgrounds, outdoor fitness areas. People have, have come up with incredible suggestions over the last couple of weeks of, of things that could be included. And really, part of achieving that might be bundling some of them as, as grant, grant-ready applications. And so having enough definition and supporting rationale for different projects that, as the various levels of government make monies available as grants, that Sea Park is well positioned and ready to, to respond to that. There's a couple of other things as well, is in, in the community, there are some service gaps and perhaps opportunities for partnerships or even coordinating, coordinating and economizing on service delivery. There are multiple service providers with, with various sorts of things. So it's, it's kind of a, trying to arrive at, Sea Park has a certain infrastructure about it and an ability to help with other things going on in the community. For example, sports fields and the scheduling of them, to create more of a single point as far as the public is concerned, a single, single interface in terms of, of recreation. So that's, that's really where the short term is with this. And then the medium term is really what doesn't get done in the short run, which doesn't sound significant. But really, there's, there's only so much that can be bit off in, in, and chewed in the, in the first go-around. But that doesn't mean these demands are, are going to go away, go away. As, as the first slide illustrated, it's a gradual increase in population, a gradual increase in demand for all of the facilities. But most interestingly then is the, the nature of fitness gym and with multipurpose spaces, it can be incrementally achieved, unlike say a pool or an arena, which is a very big hit and has to be very, very carefully and thoughtfully considered. Oh, and I guess the other aspect then of the medium term is if there is additional land acquired, that is probably the point in time where you start, where Sea Park begins to start developing that site. So additional outdoor amenities as well as perhaps some indoor facilities there as well. So that's the medium term. The long term, as I was saying, is, is kind of the complicated part, is, is the existing buildings nearing the end of service life at, at the same time. And there, I, I think I'm, I'm very conservative with my, with my numbers, but six to eight million dollars on either of the two projects as the construction number. And that's, that's not project, that's construction. So there are soft costs and other costs added on top of that. Now, going 15, 20 years out, you're going to have a greater population base, perhaps growing by as much as 1 percent a year. But construction has a nasty habit too of escalating perhaps more aggressively than population grows. And so the, the impact of those expenditures, I think, are, are significant in the future as they might be if I was to say today, both of those buildings are, are about to expire. And this is the order of magnitude of, of cost. So it is going to be something that is very significant that the community will be dealing with downstream, which brings the focus back to the short term and the opportunity to do and, and do the incremental smaller improvements now. And, and then basically be in a position then have these things done and dealt with. So that when the big storm cloud on the horizon begins to get closer, Sea Park is better prepared for that. So just in conclusion then, I've met some of the council, we've had individual meetings. I've met a couple of you as well at the open house the other day. And I invite anyone else that I haven't talked to, you're welcome to get in touch with me. And, and I'm happy to spend some time with you and talk through particulars, understand from your perspective what the issues or priorities might be, or any other kinds of concerns. And I also invite the public And, um, I also invite the public, um, to, to take a look at the, uh, Sea Park website, the open house boards and the comment sheet has now been posted as a, as an online survey. And so if anybody also wanted to add their, uh, thoughts and opinions to it, they're very welcome to, to do so and we'll be compiling that information about two to three weeks' time. So there is a bit of a window, uh, for anybody who didn't have the opportunity to come to the open house to do so. And, uh, really that's, that's basically it, I really just kind of wanted to give you that overview, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hukos. So for, um, the benefit of the committee and, and members of the public, both councillor Berger and I sit on the Sea Park Commission, so for the past several months, I think, it seems like a few months, have been very active in going over, uh, the various, um, comment sheets that have been received by the public, I think the survey from 2009, the general feedback that the commission receives as well as different activities, uh, with commission members in terms of going forward and what that looks like. So we are in the, in sort of the community engagement piece right now. So that's all sort of underway, so questions or comments from councillors? Councillor Ebene, or Logan's, pardon me.
Thank you for the presentation and it was good to meet you at the open house the other day. I just had a question about the online form, I went to it, um, the other day because I was going to send it out to some folks, but I noticed it was a Word document or a PDF and I'm just wondering if it could be a fillable PDF or some kind of survey that they could answer online?
That may be corrected now, I think that what they were trying to do is actually do it as, as you could, I'm not an IT person, I don't know even what to say, but it, it is supposed to be more user friendly now, so, um, if it isn't, I'll, I'll revisit that with staff at Sea Park.
And it was two to three weeks?
Um, ideally two weeks, yeah, but if, if there were a couple of straggling bits of information that come in, I certainly would, would want to integrate that into it, so it's this complete, uh, uh, chronicle of this process, so.
Thanks. Great, other questions from councillors? Councillor Pearson?
Just was curious about the, it's on that bullet there, it says ice demand will not likely increase enough to justify operation of two sheets, are we not full at capacity now?
If you can't play at seven o'clock at night, you're full. It's, it's, uh, the nature of, of demand, I, I'm, I'm also respectful of the fact that, that quite often with arenas, kids are playing at six o'clock in the morning and that sort of thing and, um, when I look at, at, what I've done is, is looked at the registration for minor hockey, for example, and Hockey Canada identifies optimum standards for time per player per week. And so what I'm able to do then is quantify with some credibility, the amount of time, basically the arena in, to sum it up is, is at about 80% of capacity, which means, it, it doesn't mean that, that during prime time, the other 20% sits idle. Adults are always happy to fill those time slots and play earlier and as, as much as, um, the, you know, I want to be, I want everybody to have reasonable ice times, an arena in order to recover, to work efficiently and recovering costs, really should be booked about 60 to 70 hours a week, so that means the, the 40 to 50 prime time hours and then shoulder hours as well. So really what you try to do is create capacity for minor hockey during the prime times, the early evenings and all day on the weekends and try and get the adults to the, the residual time slots. So there is still significant capacity to add more for minor hockey, another 20, well, okay, I mean, 20% capacity is 25, I mean, sorry, if it's operating 80%, that's 25% more absorption available. The other trend that's, uh, out there is a slow but precipitous decline in minor hockey nationally. And of course, a national figure or an average figure, an average is an average and it, it doesn't reveal the truth of the specific community. But, um, there is the potential that in the long term, the sport may decline modestly as well, um, which, uh, off, may offset that, the population growth. A lot of the growth in this area though will be young families and so that, you know, it could, um, it, it could actually, um, add pressure, but I don't, I, I think you'd want to be significantly past 100% before you think about another arena because if, if, if a second ice sheet was added and both are operating at 50%, they become an enormous, um, deficit and operating burden, so.
The other piece, uh, just to sort of follow what you're saying councillor Pearson, we talked about was, um, the rise, like whereas we may be seeing that downward in minor hockey, but a significant increase in field sports like soccer and so that's where would the all-weather field going in, even that might even put that field at capacity, you can only have so many games on it at one time, in which case, uh, land for a second field would, uh, may potentially over time be where the focus needs to be for another playing field. Is that, that's correct?
That's, that's a fair assessment, yes.
Uh, councillor Parkinson?
In regards to the swimming pool?
Yes.
From my understanding, the swimming pool wasn't built the correct length to have swim meets here?
Um, I'm not sure about the length, it's 25 meters long, but as a competitive pool, it might be just shy of-
Shy of it, right?
Um, the timing pads and things like that, which is a, a question in millimeters. The bigger issue is the narrowness of the pool. By current FINA standards, a lane would be about eight feet wide and with that pool, they're just a hair over six. So it's, it, it, it was an acceptable standard of the day, um, but it wouldn't be done that way now, so it's, it's considered a safety factor and it's also, it impacts, you can imagine with six competitors in the water and you're that much closer, the, the, what the water is doing affects performance as well.
Exactly, yeah.
So it's, there's, and, and, you really can't fix something like that, um, it's, it is what it is.
So then it would have to be a new pool then, right? In 15 to 20 years?
One option would be a new pool in, in the future, um, and, you know, at that point in time, there may be significant, um, increase in demand that maybe you add, not just stop at, you know, six lanes, maybe it's eight lanes, maybe it's even 10 lanes. But I think that's definitely, uh, something that would be revisited at that, that point in time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Um, councillor Berger, you've been on the commission for a number of years now, just, um, do you have any thoughts that you might be able to share about the strategic plan and sort of where things are going forward?
Well, this is, yeah, thank you. So I've been on the commission for six years and this is the first time we've actually decided to do a strategic plan, so there's, hasn't been one for this building, I don't think, for sure within the last 10 years, I don't think there are actually-
No, there's no, no documentation.
Yeah, so, and the reason why we sort of embarked upon it is because we are such a small footprint, as David has said, what's the best use of space and with the growing number of seniors and young families coming to Suk, we really wanted to know where we need to save our money and what we should be putting into, so, um, mostly I'd just like to say a huge thank you to David because the amount of information that you've given us is fantastic, so now we sort of know where we need to go moving forward and what recreation needs that we're going to be looking at.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Berger. Any other comments or questions from the committee? Okay, at that point, um, I'd like, there's public input, so if there's any members of the public that have any questions or comments?
Hi.
Hello. I keep going, you think, I did speak with David at, at the open house and then he was busy, so I was speaking with Steve and one, uh, one of the issues of course is dry space and so we were talking about dry space and I agree also sports spaces is needed, but the community hall came up for discussion for dry space and, um, it, it's something that, that we should be looking at as part of that because to build, as, as David said, to build above that to dry space for, uh, meeting halls and different things like that, we already have a space and how that's managed should be part of the discussion and, uh, how that can be improved should be part of the, the discussion. And, uh, I, I think also getting more land for fields is a good idea because there is a real need for that and we know that with outdoor, there's more outdoor activity than, but there also is that need for the dry space, so those are the two big issues.
Thank you. Thank you Ms. Lurs.
It's, it's my observation or opinion that the multipurpose space would not be in competition, nor would the fitness be with, uh, the, uh, private service providers in, in the community. As much as anything, in, for a multipurpose recreation center, you want to attract all ages and if you're, if you've got a family that perhaps say the parents are dropping off their kids to play hockey or have swim lessons or something, this is an opportunity for the parents to utilize their scarce free time as well and be able to engage in activities, so it's, it's convenience with it being co-located with other facilities. It's not intending to compete in any way with something like the community hall that, um, provides a valuable, um, space to the community and also the scale of, of, of the space here is very, very modest and certainly wouldn't be, uh, in competition with some of the scale of things that the hall can support. And just, just the word then on the, on the fitness side of the equation, um, the, it, it's, it's not huge, uh, the equipment would be very simple and, um, the, I, I guess if you, the, the private facilities are more membership based, which is a certain type of commitment and a certain type of participant that is attracted to it. This is very much an entry or gateway opportunity for people to become more physically active and, uh, it's, it's a, a simple, safe, um, perhaps calmer environment than a, than a professional fitness club might be. It is just simply, um, getting more people active and, uh, getting more families active together, so.
Any other comments from members of the public?
Loretta Deutscher, 7026 Wright Road. We are very fortunate in Suk and I'm very grateful to community members for eventually voting to have the pool here. It is a great value to those of us who are struggling with mobility issues. One of the issues that I think about all the time, I remember councillor Berger bringing a, a comment when she was speaking to the students at one of the schools and she asked the students, what would they like at the pool? And most of them said that they'd like a water slide. I, as a former teacher in the Suk School District for over 35 years, know that many of our teachers take students out of our region to another pool where there is a slide. Just a comment. Also, I'm wondering if in their plans, and perhaps this is a question for Sea Park, not of you Dave, is, have they considered that the Y is going to be opening up a facility in Langford which will have a pool, which will be, uh, recreationally based with a water slide and fitness area? So I just bring those items forward. I am very grateful that we have our pool and the arena for kids, it does help provide valuable activities for the young and the old at the in-between, thank you.
Thank you, yes, um, the commission did talk extensively about what was also happening in the west shore and, and the different projects in Langford and the like, so they were factors and, and there's an awareness around that facility. Any piece to add to that, Mr. Hukos?
Just, just that, uh, that the growing list of smaller, um, grant-ready scale projects, uh, does include the water slide now, so I don't think, I've, I've shared all that information with the commission yet, it's, as I say, the risk, the list is growing and it's in progress and it does cover off things like that.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from members of the public? Okay, so we'll move on, thank you very much for the presentation, we look forward to hearing more about the final report after the inputs concluded. Okay, so item five on the agenda is a shared streets policy for the town center and I believe that starts off with a staff report or presentation.
This slide shows the town center that's in the OCP, that shows the, uh, whoop, that shows the town center where, where it's encouraged is building to the street, which means that it creates a basically row of commercial businesses close to the sidewalks, kind of like these pictures show, which encourage the use of awnings, canopies and projecting signage. As such, there's potential for structural encroachments into the public area. Many municipalities have policies or bylaws that address these encroachments in streets and staff would like to take a proactive approach in handling potential structural encroachments in the town center road right of ways to streamline development applications. And here's another example. With the development of the town center at the forefront of council's priorities, a consistent approach in handling these types of encroachments will be helpful in streamlining applications as they come forward. Staff are asking for direction to bring forward a policy that outlines how the district should handle these encroachments into the streets within the town center. And that's it.
Okay. Councillor Logan's, I'm just trying to put a thought together, go ahead.
I want to thank you for bringing this forward because it is something that we have dealt with, with the sidewalk issues and having signs on, on the sidewalks and that sort of thing, encroaching on, on pedestrian areas. But I was just wondering if you had an example of one of the, the policies from another community that we can kind of work with?
The, the idea is to just receive the direction from the committee to actually look for and get, get more, uh, deeper research into this. So we would be definitely looking at other municipalities and taking those examples and coming forward with a suggested policy.
Okay. Councillor Parkinson?
I'd like to move the recommendation.
So councillor Parkinson has moved the recommendation, we're in committee, so there's no seconders, so the motion's on the table. Uh, I guess the question that I had was, um, was there a number of things in stream that, that can't, that we're waiting for a policy for? Part of our discussions of strategic planning was not to add any unnecessary rules or policies, so is this going to streamline or hinder, I guess? Do we have some things that are waiting for a policy before they can move or is the intent to, you know, in which case, is it better to have, like on an as-is-needed basis? When development permits come forward, we address them at a time because Suk's kind of, or is it better, oops, sorry, is it better just to have a policy in place? Just because I, we had talked about some of our policies colliding with one another. Ms. Nelson?
We believe that to have a policy in place, just to be consistent in our approach when the applications come in would be beneficial. We've had the issue, or this actually has come up in the, the Logan development where there is a small encroachment, there is also, I believe, a historical one that was on Shields that was before my time, but it, it just, it's just another step to just make it easier. This is how we're going to deal with it, this is the document we're going to use and that's it, so there wouldn't be any, any further discussion required. It, it's basically just dealing in this case with the, the simple, if you will, the awnings and the, and the signs and that kind of look for the town center. I believe there'd be a separate kind of idea if there was going to be the, um, on-street cafes or something, that would probably need to be a one-on-one.
Okay. Councillor Pearson?
Yeah, I think that it comes down to our accessibility issue, right? Because I think you're talking about, you know, in here they're showing flowers on the, you know, and one, I think it's the second picture down on the right there, right? So, that one there. So, and, and we've had a presentation, um, in Suk about our accessibility issue.
Or lack of.
Or lack of, right? You know, where sidewalks come to an end and things like that, so is it, are we mixing two things together here? Accessibility and, and a policy about, uh, encroachment over the line? That's kind of would be my question.
The idea of this policy would be just for the signage and the awnings, so that would be up above where people would walk. I would think that anything on the sidewalks themselves should be discussed at council level and be dealt with on a one-on-as-is basis kind of thing.
Did you have a follow-up councillor Pearson?
No, I'm just, I'm just thinking it through, I'm not sure, um, okay. We haven't, we don't have any of these applications out there right now, do we? With zero lot line?
Not with the signage and the awnings at this point, so while there's a mini, mini little lull, we thought we'd get something in, in place just so we can get ready for potential development in the town center.
Okay. Okay, I'm not sure what I think.
Councillor Parkinson?
I was thinking that by having the policy in place would be a good thing with the signage above so that we can have everything kind of matching, our town is coming together, we're going to start making improvements, having sidewalks going through the town, so just to be ahead of the game would be a good thing. having sidewalks going through the town. So just to be ahead of the game would be a good thing.
Councillor Pearson?
So you mentioned that there's two things that are not meeting what you would envision our policy to be now? Is that, is that part of what I heard?
No, there was two things that have come forward that have brought this to our attention, that we should really get a policy in place to do this proactively. There's a, there's a bit of an encroachment on the Logan Lane development within the public realm, if you will. And there was one in the Shields that maybe Bonnie could talk to more. I wasn't involved in that one, but it did come up.
It it, um, at the time affected the way the development could occur and it held it up. Yes, it it did uh challenge staff to come up with a solution. Uh, in the end, there was a compromise, but really the the goal for the developer or the builder was to actually have an encroachment and then we would put something in place. But we had no policy or a document to use for that purpose. So it has uh, you know, resolved in one place and now we have others that are coming forward. So we're trying to, okay, coun- ask council, we'll we'll put something in place. So we're consistent. Anybody that comes forward and their development encroaches into the right-of-way, into the road or or sidewalk area, that uh we have something in place and the tools, the actual agreement that uh would be used. So developers know what to expect.
So are we talking to Sky from Zero Lot Limit? That is, is the policy, is that what you're talking about? Because some of these signs, these examples of signs are ob- obviously over the sidewalk, but they're not impeding access on the sidewalk. So we're talking about a policy that goes to Sky?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, okay. I'm always.
So it it would also include some kind of agreement then that allows them to be in in that space, over the public sidewalk?
Similar to power lines, et cetera. I um.
That's a different deal.
Yeah. I'm always skeptical when I hear about more policies and more cumbersome things, so. And and it's my inquisitive nature to ask more questions. The um, I want to see buil- I want to see development and I want to see development that comes to zero lot line. Um, and I, but I don't want to see holdups because there's a policy about something that encroaches above the sidewalk. I'm more concerned about access. That's one of the things that is a hot button for several people in Suk already. So um, I wouldn't mind looking at some some other districts' policy, but I I think that every time we get ourselves into these policies, it seems that we get more cumbersome than than before. We have some businesses that have zero lot line now, small little mall that actually has that and it's, it's actually quite pleasant to walk along there and they have awnings and things. I think one of the owners is actually sitting in the back of the room here tonight. Just coincidentally. And and, but I don't, I I I I fear when we put policy into place, then all of a sudden we get into bylaw and then and then bylaw goes, okay, well, I don't like that. And it, so I I I worry.
The the intent is that this document would be permission for them to be there. So it would just lay out a guideline for that. And the the mall in question is actually a private sidewalk, so they're not within our right-of-way.
And it looks quite nice.
It does.
So I just kind of, okay, anyways, I just, I I worry. Sorry. It's my outside voice.
It's bothering. Other comments or questions from the committee? Okay, so open the mic up. Any public input on? And like where we're at right now is staff hasn't started. They're looking for our direction to go down that path, whether we want to do that or not. So uh, there is a motion that we do look at having something in place. It is to do with the awnings and things above. The sidewalks are on an as-is basis, whereas, uh, which would come before council. So it's just to start standardizing what canopies and awnings and and signage and the like would look like so that there's consistency in the core. So on that note, are there any comments or questions from members of the public?
Uh, again, uh, when we did our OCP, that was part of the discussion was having awnings and signs above. Uh, and I think this is just the policy to put in place that wasn't done through the zoning um or and whatever. But it has to be in place because it is encroaching on on public property. So you need to have a policy there so that uh, when people come forward and want to put up an awning, to follow the OCP, that they know that it it can be done. It's just, it's, I think it's just a housekeeping thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lures. Any other members of the public?
Councillor Pearson, thank you for encouraging me. Um, Randy Welters, Wright Road. Uh, you know, I've been here for a few years doing business in downtown Suk and I, uh, I don't see most, I don't see any problems with the bylaws uh concerning awnings and upper signs and stuff like that, because when a developer or store owner is going to do that, they know what the rules are and they generally don't break them. And if they do, then, you know, Tony shows up or the fire marshal shows up and says, don't do this. The part that has been most frustrating in Suk since I've been here is the sign bylaw. And, you know, we've gone through this with, you know, in the last or two terms ago, or I guess it was two terms ago. You know, there was a whole committee that took two years to come up with a thing, but it's, there's no enforcement. So I think whatever bylaws that you guys deem as necessary for our community, there has to be some kind of enforcement to make it so that everybody knows the rules and that's what I would like to see.
Well, that's true, Mr. Welters. Um, and sort of looking at enforcement of that sign bylaw is in our work plan. So that'll be coming forward and should be a lively discussion. Um, any other comments from members of the public? Okay, so on that note, I will call the question on the recommendation. And that is that the committee, the whole direct staff, to bring forward a policy that outlines how the district should handle structural encroachments into streets within the town center. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Councillor Pearson is opposed. Would you like your name recorded for the record? No? Okay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to item six, public input, current issues. We do have a submission received on May twenty-eighth from Mr. Randy Welters regarding the roundabout project. Uh, we are in receipt of your letter, Mr. Welters. Uh, would you like to come forward and speak to your letter?
Your worshiping council, I appreciate the opportunity to uh discuss this. Uh, I'm assuming you you've got the letter and you've read it and I won't sort of go through it word for word, but um, it's of great concern. I went, started at the west end of the business community and went to the east end of it along the Suk Road, West Coast Road and talked to probably eighty percent of the businesses. And I think um, all but two totally agreed with my my fear of the timing of construct, start of construction for the roundabout. I mean, I, you know, I listened to lots of, I don't want the roundabout to begin with, to, yes, it's the best thing since. And that that kind of conversation and I just, I, that's not why I was talking to them. I was talking to them about the article in the paper, in the Suk News Mirror that was suggesting that you wanted to try and start in the middle of July. And I think that starting the uh, construction at the same time as A, the Royal Bank is still going to be going strong. And, but more importantly, I'll use an example. Uh, two or three or four years ago, there was a big road construction in front of West Coast Tire. Um, it went on for a few months, uh, the one-way traffic and that. And at the time, uh, our restaurant where I, where I worked had a really strong lunch business and early evening business. You know, things were good. I mean, this, the construction industry was still going strong and there was lots of traffic from uh people coming out to do business in Suk, coming from Victoria or Langford, and lots of uh Suk people going into those communities for various reasons. Well, I would say within a week, certainly within two weeks of that, the road con- uh restrictions, our lunch business, just like I said in the letter, fifty percent and, you know, Patrick reminded me, there was probably more than that. And and in fact, uh, after about a month or so, uh, Check Six came out and did a little blurb on it and, you know, interviewed us, a couple of us and that sort of thing. So it was significant. And my fear is that if this roundabout is started between in July, August, or even the beginning of September, which is when our whole profitability for tourism is is really centered, that you'll really hurt, I mean significantly hurt, the business community. And, because what happens is you take away the, if you send, you know, half the people up around Wadham's Way and and around the the top end of Suk and restrict other, the other half of the people to uh coming and going, the the convenience and the impulse and the planning of shopping in Suk, in our core, whether it be eating or drugstore or laundromat or grocery stores or any, you know, any of our community. Um, it just really gets in the way of people being willing to put up with that just to go buy that one thing that they would normally do. And uh, you know, we, as a business community in our core, we need um, the last two weeks of June through the first two weeks of September to be where the profit is. Because if, we've got, you know, two really slow months coming up before Christmas, then you kind of peak and then you got two or three slow months after Christmas. And so uh, it'll hurt, you know, you got uh local employment, uh, business success and expansion. All of those things are going to be severely affected if, and so what we're asking is, and I know that there's a chance that it won't happen in the middle of July, but start the project in the last half of September. It's not going to matter to the, I mean, we're not cold, we're not rainy. Uh, it's not going to matter to the construction and we can work around. I'm starting to, I don't talk so well in public anymore. Um, you know, it's a couple, of the, of the two businesses that were kind of hesitant to agree with the petition that I was getting around, both of them were comments about the school, Suk Elementary, and how that would affect people going. But we can work around that. We're smart enough to figure how to get the the kids around the the north end into the school. It might just be a little change and instead of you can't use Suk Road. So um, I really would like you guys to, to, you know, stand up for our business community and and, you know, if you want to talk to get some more in input from some of the the business community, be happy to put something together. I mean, it's a, it's an issue and uh, it scares me. I'd be willing to answer a couple of questions now.
Um, thank you, Mr. Welters, for bringing this forward. It is something that um council has had dialogue with about the timing uh when we sort of found out the timeline from highways, you know, when is it going to go out? When is it going to close? When are they going to start work? And also the time of day. So some of um, they did, uh, we did get some feedback. So some of the things they said regarding the timing, and I'll just read it because I'm not technical, it's just easier for me to sort of read, was here, is the grading and paving projects of this nature require fair weather to complete and maintain required quality standards. To place gravels and concrete and pave in inclement, wet or colder weathers drastically reduces the quality of the delivered product. To offset that expected loss in quality would require additional project funding to mitigate the issues associated with the weather. So we would be deciding between a substandard product or paying a higher price to receive quality product outside the summer season. In prolonged weather like we usually receive in November, it's extremely difficult to achieve quality even with additional mitigation efforts and costs being provided. And almost assuredly, we would not get the product nor quality value for public funds. To postpone by a month would impact the completion date feasibility by the end of September, putting constructionability, quality issues into play regarding gravel grading, concrete works and paving in wetfall weather. Um, let's see here. For traffic management um in the downtown core is a high priority for the project and access to every business to be maintained throughout construction. And council's been very vocal about the need to maintain access. The primary traffic management is the volume of traffic during peak commuter periods of the day. To mitigate this issue, a highway detour will be put in place to utilize Wadham's as a connector route around the roundabout site. However, traffic will still be allowed through the downtown core via Highway fourteen. So customers and clients still wanting to visit local stores and business will be able to do so. And large transport and logging trucks will also continue to use the Suk Road alignment. With respect to the previous project near West Coast Tire, these works did result in unintended and unacceptable traffic impacts that they've learned a great deal from. Additionally, that site didn't have the benefit of a reasonably short and direct detour, as would be the case with Wadham's. So that alone would, that alone would help to mitigate traffic impacts. The language used in their contract has, regarding delays, has been tightened and enforcement of the daily thresholds will be heavily enforced. So they are aware of how that hurts Suk. The concurrent construction of the Royal Bank to be accommodated and apart from delivery of the materials and equipment, the construction activities for that site will primarily reside within that property footprint. And we do not anticipate the Royal Bank project having significant impact to road users. In suggestion of night work, this would not actually meaningfully mitigate impacts to traffic as the scope and magnitude of the changes added around the roundabout would not be possible to constru- construct nightly and return the road to normal condition flows during the day. Once we cut the road for the roundabout, there'd be a change to the traffic pattern on a twenty-four-seven basis and still it's substantially completed. And this is unavoidable for construction in the detour. Access to the mall would still be uh in place and that's sort of what we've received. So it's been on and on and on ever since we started this, that um, the needs of the business community certainly being.
No, but, you know, they don't live in Suk and they don't have a business in Suk. And there's lots of us that are, that own businesses in this town that have been here for a long time. And we know what affects, we know that, you know, uh, all you got to do is have an accident down Suk Road and you can tell in your business. And um, you know, it's just, it's just really frustrating to think that a bunch of people in in the government, in highways, can sit there and, you know, not once did they talk about uh traffic convenience, about guys and, you know, people in the car returning and gee, oh, I got to get, you know, I want to go into one of the grocery stores and get dinner or I want to do this. So where they'll, where they'll do it is in Langford on their way home. And it's just, you know, what are we going to do if ten businesses go out of business? Uh, highway's going to go, oh, gee. No, they're not. They're going to say, well, we thought, you know, we still allow traffic to you, but it's not good enough. We, what we're asking is you guys to stand up and tell highways, this is our town and we want to protect our businesses. And so you figure it out. I mean, we're not in in northern Alberta or Saskatchewan or something where it's thirty below.
Well, it's.
We're talking about our, our, you know, they're talking about, they're using weather as an example of why they have to, uh, they're professionals.
I appreciate your frustration, I do. It's just, uh, it's also their highway, it's their road and we're somehow.
Well, so what do they want us to do? Have a a a mob out there to say, no, you know, the old twenty years ago when the tree huggers used to get out there? Because there's a lot of people that are afraid of what they're, how happened in their business, is they go trickle in and then all of a sudden it's fall and then it's winter. And how the hell are they going to pay anything? So, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that forward. Any comments from councillors? Councillor Pearson and Parkinson?
So, right, Mr. Welters, um, do you see any other viable options? Because I know that we've been approached about some other kind of things, but it's, you know, it's through private property, but there's been some people who have volunteered their property and are you, are you aware of that?
I've heard some, you know, like on the south side?
No, on the north side.
Oh, yeah?
So, no, I, and I, and I, and I, you know, I don't want to go too far in the in the public realm here, but there has been some, and I think that some of that discussion should take place. And and I hear you loud and clear, so I just wanted to say thanks for for making it to us. Um, there has been some discussion about some properties up that way, that that are a lot closer than W- um, Wadham's Way.
Yeah.
That might, that might be not.
You know, anything, Mr. Pearson, anything would help.
Okay.
But, you know, it's really, and and you know yourselves, you know, uh, you're traveling somewhere, you're going home or you're going to into work or something like that and and whatever is an impediment causes, can cause you to make a different decision. Do I get gas here or do I go and get it at the superstore? Do I, you know, do I shop? On my way home or I can stop into Western Avili- you know, like, it's all those little things. And that's, and you know, we're talking about uh tripling or whatever the the stats are, doubling the size of Suk uh for, you know, for July, August and the first half of September. So you've got all of that and we're saying to them, ah, we don't really care whether you can get around and you can go shopping and all of that. Go to the beaches. You can get around, and you can go shopping and all of that, go to the beaches.
Yeah.
You know, and more local people are out shopping in this time of year, so it's, it's, it scares me. It really scares me.
And, you know, and, and, and. Is there an opportunity here too, mixed into this, to use a detour as a draw? To say, you know, you've gone the bumpy way around Suk, come to Stonepipe Grill and get twenty percent off your dinner, I don't know, I'm.
If we had a radio station, you might have a point there.
Do, do you know what I mean? I, I, I don't know if there's, have somebody standing there handing out, you, you just took a detour. And I'm thinking out of the box, because I, because I think that we need to, to be out there and, and somehow help. I don't know if we're gonna be able to move highways, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I don't know if we're gonna be able to do that, but we'll, we'll certainly make.
It's our town, we can tell them to go fly the kite in some other community, you know, I just, and I, I'm sorry to be flippant, but.
No, I, and I, I appreciate.
And a, a, a long time ago, uh, a hundred years ago, or whatever, I lived in Pencton. And I was a young businessman in Pencton, and they put the bypass in along, uh, the river there. So that if you were going to Kelowna, you didn't have to struggle to go through downtown Pencton and then come around, you know? And so in the short term, that upset and hurt downtown business. But it wasn't very long before, because it was a highway, and it was there forever, and it was usual, right? That people could make a choice, you either went up the bypass and on your way to Summerland or Kelowna. Or you would go into town, or, or take the bypass and then be, but, you know, so, so business became normal again. But in the, in the very, but that was a, you know, if, if we're talking about building a road, a second road access to Suk. I'd still be at home having a Corona, but we're not.
Yeah.
Right? And, and if, if, um. You know, you know what I'm saying, if this was a bypass, uh, to go through permanently. We would have short-term pain for long-term gain, because, you know, we all know the benefits of easier access, uh, into Suk. And, and being more convenient for the residents that live on the west side, or the north end of town, that sort of thing. But we're talking about, you know, we, we don't have time enough to train and make people feel comfortable about the inconvenience. So they'll continue to shop here, cause all of a sudden it'll be over, but that's what I'm worried about.
Another piece of the project, though, is that, yeah, there is the roundabout, but there's also sidewalks improvements. There's the improvements to the Otter Point and Suk Road intersection, as well as the Church Road and Suk Road intersection. Both that do not serve, they're complete failures, uh, right now with how they manage traffic and get people to shops in Suk. So that is also work that's happening at the same time.
You know, a couple of, a little while ago, I would have not only been meeting the bush about the timing of this thing. But I probably would have made a couple of snide remarks about the roundabout in general, but I went and, uh, met with Elizabeth. Last week, a week, a couple of weeks ago, and she showed me the plans, and I, I, you know, I realized that. This is gonna make, this is gonna have a big difference in our downtown, and, and so I don't share that criticism of, of roundabouts in general. But it's just the timing.
I totally appreciate that, absolutely. Counselor Parkinson?
Is there a possibility of doing any night work?
They have looked at that, um, but at the same time, once they cut in the road, it's this twenty-four-seven pattern, all the way around, night and day.
But when they're doing the night work, right, and you're driving through during the day, there's not as much problems of getting through. With everybody around, I mean, everybody tries to get night work done, cause it's easier for the people in town. So that they can still travel right through and not have trucks and digging and whatever.
Ms. Nelson, do you have any comments on the night work question? We've talked about.
Only, yeah, only what M O, M O T I suggests, that once they start cutting up the road, it's pretty tough to put it back into a full highway each day. Just to do a couple hours of work at night, so it, it's just, it's pretty major construction, so it's easier to keep at least one lane flowing. Or whatever they need to do, the, keep access to the businesses going, but to get it to a total uninterrupted flow in the daytime, that would just. It would just take too much work to keep doing that, you wouldn't make any gains, and it would just extend the project that much longer. Sometimes it's the short-term, quick get it in and get it done, that's more effective, but totally understanding, of course, the effects.
You know, and, and, and it's been brought up a couple of times about, you know, Langford didn't feel that so much. Well, I, you know, I've been, if I had the time, I would have gone to the two shop, you know, the, the shopping centers on either side of the major roundabout there. But in Langford, it's different, because they have two or three ways to get anywhere, right, and, and we don't. And it, you know, we can't, once, once you go up around Wadham's and come down, you're, you've, you've gone past the two shopping centers. You've gone past, uh, you know, and you're gonna get down, so you even come down Otter Point Road to West Coast Road. And where's the parking, you know, because at some point, that's gonna be, you know, uh, being adjusted for. Paving and sidewalks and all that sort of stuff, so it's just, you know, in the, it's just in the middle of summer, it's, I just don't get it. They don't, they don't live here, they don't do business here, and so, I don't wanna say they don't care, but, you know.
Totally hear you. Counselor Part, or pardon me, Berger?
Thank you, um, I completely hear your frustration and totally understand where your, um, concerns are coming from. And it's, and it's valid, because there are gonna be pains, nobody's gonna, I don't think anyone at this table doesn't think there's gonna be some, some pains going through the process. So I have another comment for you, but first a question for, um, um, Elizabeth. What was the construction timeline as far as their end date?
The end date is set at the end of September.
Of September.
Currently.
Okay. So I, last year was, or two years ago, I camped in Lake Houchen when the roundabout construction went through. And we camp at their municipal campground, which is right at the edge, the heels of the town, so we use the town quite frequently. There's about ten families of us that go from Suk, and we go every year for two weeks, and I talked to some of the business owners, cause of course, we were still in the works of doing this one. And, um, asked them what were their major problems, and they said, locals, yeah, a lot of locals sort of did their business on their way home from Duncan. Or waited till it slowed down, but they said the visitors still came. So, uh, not saying that there's not gonna be pains, cause there is gonna be pains, um, but I think on behalf of the district. To avoid incurring cost of paving during wet months, we have to do the best that we possibly can during our summer months. Which they dictated that they're gonna do the work in, to try and make it as functional and as easy as we can for the business community. Because I, I don't think you'll find any one of us at this table that aren't, don't share your concerns, I hugely do. I share your concerns with what is gonna do the business community, I'm hoping that we're gonna weather the storm like Lake Houchen did. And we're still gonna have the visitors come, and they're still gonna shop in our town, I think the district, it will be huge for us to put out a big public notion. Or reiterate again and again that locals need to sort of travel through Wadham's Way, to allow the visitors to stop in the shops. And then, of course, we'll stop in our shops still and use them as well, but, um, it's, like I said, Lake Houchen weathered the storm. I, I'd like to think that we can do, I'm optimistic.
Well, yeah, you know, uh, yeah, it's a much smaller community, and it, it doesn't have the. Visitor traffic that Suk does, because it's not just Suk that attracts, uh, tourists here, it's Shirley and Port Benfrew. And, you know, I mean, there's.
Yeah.
All of us.
Well, Lake Houchen's very, in the summer, and we, they did theirs in July and August as well, and I was there from, we go from the last week of July, first week of August every year. And they do their tubing, a- and it's huge, it's in the heart of their town, and you've gotta get through that construction, and now that it's a beautiful roundabout. We had to get through it to get there, so the busloads taking the people with tubing and people on their cars, it, you gotta wait a couple extra minutes.
You know.
Again, they weathered the storm. The end result is gonna be so much, the light is there.
I understand that, but you know, we're gonna, as a business community, we're gonna go and hire, you know, we have to go, okay, well, what if, what if Randy is, uh, you know, wrong? And, or what if we, we can overcome this and that sort of thing, so we'll be able to go hire our summer staff and our students. And, you know, like, we make commitments, we've, most of us have already made commitments for handling the expected summer business. And, you know, then if, I just, you know, we're dealing with people's lives and livelihoods and futures and that sort of thing. It's not like, uh, okay, so we blow July and August, or we lose twenty-five or thirty percent of our business in July and August. But we'll make it up in November, October, you know, our community isn't big enough to, to really. You know, absorb those kind of losses, that's my feeling, so, I mean, I, you know, we could still be here at midnight talking about this. I understand, and I, I appreciate, uh, you know, that your concern about the concern. So I just would like you to tell highways to go to Mexico for a month and come back when we can afford to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welters. Final comment from Counselor Parkinson?
I would like to see the roundabout start later in July, if, if it's happening during that time. Because of the, um, like, the scout, the cab, Jamburi. There's three thousand people coming for the first two weeks in July, and also during that time, we have the national baseball tournament. And the hotels are all completely booked right now, so those events will be over on the twentieth of July. So it would be really nice if four thousand people were able to travel through town without being stopped by construction.
Any other comments or questions from counselors? Okay. So at this point, I think, um, there's a few others, there's also a submission, uh, received May twenty eighth. From the Suk Region Chamber of Commerce, Highway fourteen improvements, that, uh, came out after the, the closure. That we had, that accident, and we do have a letter going to the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. I'd sort of said that after every closure, I'm sending them a letter, so that's what's happening, and here we are again, and this is what's going on. And, and it's just sort of the way you build action with the ministry, is you have to continually keep the issues live, so that is going out. So, uh, Ms. Brinkley, would we be requiring a motion to receive these? Okay, so could I get a motion to receive from Counselor Logans, are there any further comments or questions on the two pieces? Okay, all those in favor of receipt, um, are there any other members of the public that would have any comments or questions for today's agenda? Welcome back, Mrs. Lures.
Welcome back, I, I just wanted to comment with what Randy was saying, um, we're talking about tourism, et cetera, and having been in tourism industry. And, and in the restaurant business and in Victoria, uh, that, that July, August, September are the gravy. They're the gravy that keep you going, it's not like it's, uh, uh, the November, December, January can be pretty dry. And that, that is the gravy that keeps the, those companies or those businesses afloat. And if they don't get that business, that's when they, when they fail, so that's a real serious thing, that, that. July, August, September is really serious, so, you know, you might, businesses are struggling, as you know, as it is, and, uh. Uh, I mean, if you could, if, if there's a possibility of putting a bypass, uh, on the south end and the north. On both ends, so that, so that the people can get by, even if it's one way, one way and one way the other way, just so that they're not. Totally out of that town center, because it's a real serious issue, and, and you could, businesses are struggling, as, as Randy said, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lures. Okay, so on that note then, we'll just call for a motion to adjourn, with my Counselor Parkinson, all those in favor of adjournment, motion is carried, thank you.